Okay, the July meeting of the Greenbrier County Republican Club will now come to order. You have copies of the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, it will be approved. And Prince Thompson is going to give our indication and then I'm going to ask Ponce Pollard to lead the pledge of allegiance. Ponce is a Vietnamese veteran, so I want to recognize him.
Let us pray. Lord above, we thank you for the vigor that you have given us to work this day and every day and to think ahead to working at the state fair booth. We pray you will give us energy and the ability to talk and find common cause with those who come by the booth. Lord, we ask that you give us a fair and honest election this November. We pray you will be with each one of us. And Lord, we pray that you will bless the candidates who appear on the ballot. We pray for saving this country, reinvigorating this country. We pray that you will be expanding the revivals and the awakenings that you have sponsored these last two years. We pray that you will raise up good men and women to lead us. These things we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
I apologize for not bringing an American flag or letting Richie know that we usually have a flag, but I think we all can revere the flag without it being present, so Ponce, go ahead.
(Inaudible)
He's seated. Our last couple of meetings have gotten turned into some kind of topsy-turvy, so actually has some recorded minutes in our notebook, but we hadn't had any to send out. There's nothing really important or astounding in them. The next thing on the agenda is the treasures report.
Yeah, I'm totally ready. (Inaudible).
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was thinking of your checks.
Yeah, we've got some new people here tonight. If one of you introduce yourself, I'm not sure.
I'm Jeff Davis.
Oh, you're Jeff Davis, okay. My vision is impaired, so.
Sorry.
Hey, Rich.
We also have with us tonight the interim county commissioner, Nick Daly. So Nick, welcome aboard. Nick assures me that he wants to become a member of the Republican Club and become participant in the Republican affairs. We also have our two candidates for the county commission and they'll be doing something in the program later. And Lowell Rose, who is currently on the county commission, is here. So good to see you, Lowell. Thanks for coming. Okay, our old business is the state fair booth and Prince Thompson has agreed to chair that booth again this year, so.
I'm glad to be back and I've learned quite a bit last year, how to get out from behind the table, meet the people in the aisle, and to talk issues with them. I hope we can all do the same thing this next year. We are going to be meeting and manning the booth, or womaning the booth, from the 8th of August through the 17th. The last day is the 17th. So we will have an opportunity to sign up. I have spaces drawn up for the morning and then underneath it for the afternoon and all of the mornings and afternoons to follow in the second week. So we'll be looking for some help. All are welcome to serve. We all have a common purpose, whether it is with the Republican Club. We're anticipating some assistance in numbers from the people in the executive committee. I understand that there may be some who do not wish to be paired with people from the executive committee, but there are plenty of slots where you don't have to serve with someone that you don't trust. I hope we can all get along because we all have a common purpose.
We did purchase our admissions tickets. We furnish gated admissions tickets to everybody that works in the booth. They cost us $8.25 apiece for the concessionaires. And I was surprised to learn that the gated admissions, if bought in advance, are $10. Last year, the gated admissions, once the fair started, were $12. This year, they're up to $12 to $15. So that's a 25% increase over the years. So if you think inflation's only at the gas pump and the grocery store, think again.
We'll be giving written instructions for each of the people who sign up to serve. I'm currently changing some of the names and phone numbers on that from last year. So I will be giving those out perhaps by email, assuming we have your email. And if not, then I will be mailing those to you. We'll be having the Trump dollars, as we had last time, club brochures, pictures with Trump. You know, he's, at this particular state fair, he's not really anymore mobile than he was last time, but he loves to have his picture taken with all of you. And there'll be no sales of merchandise, but we will be offering club memberships and member registration cards. We will have a donor box prominently featured in the front table so that we can at least encourage others to give donations, which will help the candidates. Do we need to say anything? Well, the shifts will be 9:00 to 2:30 and 2:30 till 8:00. Last year, we pretty well got out of there by 7:00, but they want us to stay there until 8:00.
The fair insists that you man the booth from 9:00 until 9:00. But last year, we, this year, all the shows start at 8:00. There's really little sense in having a booth open once the shows start. So we shortened the shifts by half an hour and we'll close the booth at 8:00. We have our pictures, new pictures for the new candidates, and all our captions are post-net now being made, so we'll have those ready. And I think we'll be getting our display board from the Beckley Arts Center again.
Any questions from anyone?
Will you have voter registration cards also?
We didn't last year.
We have had voter registration cards available.
We have, the Secretary of State has his own booth around there. They look at where they can register on line without even filling out the cards. We will have some and people will have them if they want to carry them home and mail them in.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to have any of the candidates at the booth at certain times or are you on the way right now?
We don't know.
All the candidates have been contacted by letter, telling them what we do and that we will be glad to have their literature there, will have their pictures. And they've all been invited to come by and work in the booth and work out of the booth anytime they want to. But I have not heard anything back from any of them yet.
It'd be nice if they would show up and then you could put that in an email and send out to people or whatever. That's just my thoughts.
You're right, I agree. Barbara?
I've got the two tables, three chairs, and a trash basket of bags to bring.
Just like last year. It was very nice, the way it looked, with the covers over the tables and you can handle a lot of bags.
That's exactly right. Are you all going to provide bottles of water? You know what?
We did last year and I'm sure we will this year too. They're not for dispensing, but for our people that are wanting. Or to get somebody that comes by desperately needing a glass of water.
And if they happen to be crafty, lucky, they might even smuggle in a bottle of beer.
A bottle of beer.
But we don't want to publicize it.
Yeah.
Criminal activity, right?
The beer sales at the fair are just phenomenal. If you go hear the report of how much they sell on their beer sales since they started two or three years ago. Sometimes it just purchases $10,000 a night. Hey, something else?
Will you pass out, have candy available or fruits?
I'll make sure there's candy there. I'll make sure there's candy.
Okay. I'm curious.
Unless you want to donate, son.
Yeah, peanut butter.
Well, I would, but however, I thought about that, but I didn't know if it would be feasible.
You can't make that much, can you?
No, I can't make that much, not with what I have to make for the fair.
You can do it for the workers.
I'm sorry?
I said you can make the fudge for the workers.
Well, I can handle that.
I'll work every day.
I'll put you down for that.
Every day.
Morning or afternoon?
Afternoon.
I think I was ready with the treasures report.
Okay, so as of today, we have $10,053.82 in our account. Since our last meeting, we put in $72.34. We paid out $175 to the Alderson 4th of July Festival for a ad. I don't know if any of you all saw it or not. It's a nice, colorful, cute little ad. We had three people pay membership and we had $1.34 in interest.
Wow.
Want to talk about anything else as far as money?
About money?
Are we done?
We'll do that later on.
Okay. All right, so I just wrote a check for $350 for tickets for the gated admission for the workers, so we'll deduct that next meeting. And I think that's it.
So we are pretty well flush at this point. All our bills are paid and the fair is paid, the insurance for the fair is paid, so we're all set about it. And the biggest thing is people signing up to work in our booth and we hope that some of the candidates will do that as well. Pat Ba always has worked in our booth, but I'm not sure if he will be doing that this year now that he is a non-Jordanian judge, so. But our two House of Delegates candidates have assured me they would be here tonight and would be here with their checks to become members, but.
These two?
The what?
These two. Is that who you invited?
Yeah. The, any questions about the treasures report? Neither will be filed for audit at the end of the year. Okay.
I'm there.
Under our new business.
There you can sign in.
Under the new business, the Reagan movie, you may have seen it advertised. Reagan movie will be here, but the Cinemark doesn't know yet when it'll be. They'll find out about it about the middle of August, about the time the fair is ending. And we can make reservations if people want to go as a group. The cost is the same, senior citizens, rate, all that. That's one of the things we ought to think about is whether we would like to attend that as a group. So, all right, our candidates for the county commission are Richie Holiday and Tammy Tensher, who is currently the president of the county commission. And they're going to give us a little presentation about what they do, what their goals are and what their aspirations are for the county commission. Tammy, you can be first.
Well, nice to be here. I am running on the ballot in November. I was fortunate to win my primary, so I do not have anyone running against me on the ballot. So this is my sixth year that I have been a commissioner and I will end this term and begin the new term in January. And I have been extremely involved ever since I have been a commissioner. I live in Reynell, so representation on the western end of the county was paramount in my purpose for running and hope that I have represented the western end of the county satisfactorily. We have a lot happening in the county and there are quite a few projects that are still yet to be completed that are in process right now. So one of the biggest goals, and hopefully by the time the second term is over with, those projects will have been completed. We have a major water infrastructure project from Sand Black to Asbury that will soon be bid out and that is a $17 million project. Excuse me, that is a $25 million project. Our broadband project for the county is also underway and that is a $12 million project and that will bring broadband service to all parts of the county. We have numerous projects taking place in White Sulfur Springs right now, including just this week, the beginning of one of the sewer projects. And along with continued progress being made on the Meadow River Trail. That is an outdoor recreation project that has been underway for quite a while and there was significant damage to that area in the flood of 2016. And we have had FEMA funding as well as grants that have been on hold due to the flood and we're now being able to finalize and complete that and will soon begin this summer construction on the final phase. And that is a 26-mile rail to trail project and the goal is to bring that trail into the New River Gorge Preserve and National Park into, through Fayette County. Fayette County is a partner with Greenbrier County on that project. And so at any rate, we have numerous projects going on. I'm happy to discuss any of them with you. But for me, my goal is to continue the work that I have done. I am extremely involved in the day-to-day work of the commission. The first and foremost job and priority of the commission is the finances of the county and the county is in very good, a very good financial position right now. We are, we are very conservative in our spending as far as outside support of things that are not associated with the county as the top priority and most largest responsibility of the county is to make sure all of our departments are funded and properly funded in order for them to be able to do their job. Of course, all of you know that one of the biggest, another big project that we have is the renovation and addition of the courthouse and we are dealing with a historic building in certain parts of the structure. It is the oldest operational, section of it is the oldest operational courthouse in the state and so it has needed quite a bit of work for quite a long time and we were very fortunate to be able to begin that project as I've been a commissioner. And hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have that project completed. It has taken us longer than expected due to construction delays and delivery delays, but we are moving forward with that very nicely, as well as our construction project that we have for the addition and renovation of the Greenbrier County Health Department. And that project is being funded through the American Rescue Plan funds that the county received and as well as a partial, partial amount of those funds are being used to fund the water project. So, you know, for me, my biggest thing is to make sure we continue and move forward and complete these projects. It is, many of them have been discussed for a long time and we've been very fortunate to be able to begin them and I hope that we will be able to complete all of them, hopefully by the end of my second term. But I'm happy to answer any questions and provide any information I can to you.
Tammy?
Yes, ma'am.
The one big project you didn't mention was the sports field.
The sportsplex is currently, has not had any progress, numerous items related to that. The biggest issue is the funding for that project and how to move forward with that project. And so at this time, there is, you know, there is not a plan forward for that, simply because there is not a budget in place, there is not a way to be able to fund the project other than arts and rec funding and the revenue that comes from the hotel motel tax is not sufficient enough to be able to fund the project to be able to complete it. So in order to complete it and to move forward, there would have to be another method of funding the project.
You will accept checks from the public?
Well, I do not know the legal process, or excuse me, there would have to be a legal process to accept donations, but donations are eligible. But again, there, you know, that was a project prior to my becoming a commissioner and so I was not involved in the preparation for that project. The need is definitely a need. We need some facilities and activities for our youth in Greenbrier County. And I would say the entire county. Being from the Meadow River Valley, we are extremely limited to be able to offer our youth facilities and, but in order to move forward with that project, we, there will need to be a clear funding path for that. Right now, there are numerous other projects that are funded and have funding and so that is the process moving forward at this point.
Let's hold any other questions and we'll hear from Richie and then we'll open the questions and ask Lowell Rose, who's been on the commission a couple of terms, to participate in answering those. So the executive committee has chosen Richie Holiday to be appointed to the ballot for the central section. So Richie, we appreciate your letting us use your facility here tonight.
Absolutely.
Hope you'll consider making it the home of the Republican Club in the future.
Absolutely. It's a great facility.
Richie, floor is yours. You can go ahead and stand up or whatever you want.
I'd rather just sit down. I'll be more comfortable, if that's okay, but I will speak loud. I'm not a public speaker by no means, but I'm Richie Holiday, I'm the Republican nominee for the ballot to fill a vacancy left by Blaine Phillips. I was born and raised in Ronsover. I graduated from Greenbrier East, a lifelong Republican. I went to college here when New River was Bluefield State and graduated from there with a degree in education. When I finished my degree there, there was not a career opportunity for my career path here, so I moved to Cincinnati for a couple of years to finish my education and then from there, went to Monroe County in Peters Town for 10 years. While I was in Peters Town, I served on the town council as a councilman and as a city recorder for many years. So I'm familiar with governmental budget and a lot of that stuff, albeit the town of Peters Town's budget is not nearly as big as Greenbrier County's. It's pretty well budgeting is budgeting. I'm the father of four wonderful boys. Two of them are here on earth and two are in heaven. I'm looking forward to working with Commissioners Tensher and Lowell and I think that I can bring a different maybe perspective to things. This is my business. I own Morgan Funeral Homes. I'm very business-minded. I'm very money, spending-minded. When you're a person of business, you have to watch every penny that you spend because the next penny is not guaranteed in this business, so. I've already had several Greenbrier Countyans reach out to me with issues that they have or concerns that they have and they'll start the sentence off by, "Now, I know you're not elected yet, but..." And so I think a big thing with being a commissioner is listening to your constituents and listening to their issues that they have and then trying to find a path forward to solutions, if there is a solution, if it's a solution that a commissioner can do, you know, or work with them to find a solution. And a couple of those have been issues with water or broadband have been the four that have come up to me so far. And our commissioners are doing a great job with getting broadband to our county and I applaud them for that. So as far as the sportsplex, I know that question was asked earlier, we really need to find a funding source for that. My boys and my oldest son especially, he plays every sport imaginable and he's even a bull rider and a steer wrestler with the West Virginia High School Radio Association at the age of nine. And a month ago, he won the West Virginia Championship Calf Rider in Elkins. So I know what it's like to be a dad of a boy who's playing baseball and if they go out for sectional tournaments, we have to go to Allegheny County or to Beckley because they have the facilities that we don't. And I think that Greenbrier County, being the greatest place to live in the world, we should have a sports facility that is equal to that or better than anyone around us for our kids because if our kids don't have an opportunity, their parents are going to look elsewhere to live where that opportunity is. And we want to work hard to try to keep everyone that we have here. The only other thing I'd like to speak about tonight, it's just a problem that I know that I have, is we have a traffic problem here in Lewisburg.
You think?
Now, I know that it's been studied in the past and people say that we don't have a problem, but we have a problem. My son goes to Ronsford Elementary. He doesn't go to Lewisburg Elementary. The reason for that is my oldest son, he was sick for a long period of time and we'd have to be gone for months at a time to Pittsburgh Children's Hospital, so he would stay with my sister and her children went to Ronsford. And so we just kept that, you know, after my son passed away. My youngest son stays, stayed at Ronsford Elementary. When it takes you 45 minutes to get from McDonald's to the interstate, we have a problem. And it's not just a problem for our everyday commuters, it's a problem for our first responders, it's a problem for our law enforcement, our fire departments. If you've been sitting in that traffic, looking at a huge fire truck, trying to get through the traffic, it's dangerous and, you know, we're very lucky that we've not had terrible accidents from it. So I don't know if it's a solution a commissioner can work on, but it's one that I'm willing to take on to try to rectify that situation. Again, I'm looking forward to working with the other commissioners and making Greenbrier County a better place for all of us to live and for my family.
Thank you, Richie. Lowell, would you like to comment and maybe you'd like to comment about the sportsplex?
Yeah.
That's the one that seems to be on everybody's plate lately.
I hope everybody can hear me all right. I'm on the horse. The sportsplex, when we started it, we had saved up some money and we had a gentleman working for us. working for us at the time who had worked on sports complexes and stuff. We kind of relied on him to get the ball rolling and grants and things and that didn't, didn't prove out to work. But also right after we started, pretty much started the sportsplex and got something going on, of course, we've had COVID, we've had our other projects, the courthouse project and the project down at the health department. And we've just had so much stuff on our plates, we hadn't, I hadn't got back to. Now, as recently as last fall, I got the group that did the artificial turf at Greenbrier West and replaced the turf at East to give me pricing on ball fields for the waterplex and the two soccer fields, the, they're the competition sized soccer fields, not football field size. And we got all, all together, we have, we'll have four ball fields and five soccer fields and a walking trail for anyone elderly or whoever to walk on and a lot of other things out there. But it's kind of took a back burner. As Tammy said, the need is there and there's a lot of people in the community that really want to see it. It's just a matter of getting back up to speed on it with all these other projects and getting funding for the ball field, excuse me. Ball fields are running roughly a million bucks a piece for turf and, and developing. So it's going to be a several million dollar project. We've already bought, got the property, we've already done the grading, the fields are all graded out and a lot of the drainage, ditches, things of that nature are already done. So basically, we just got to work on, concentrate on the fields. The parking lots are already in as far as gravel and everything. The roads are already in, drainage structures have been in. So we're way ahead of the ball game, so we're not starting at zero, but we got to pick it up from where we're at and go from there and finish developing it. But it's going to be, still take several million dollars to complete the whole project. I kind of look forward to probably back up and try to do it in phases, maybe two of the ball fields and the two soccer fields and just keep doing it in phases until we can, you can get a few million dollars at times, but to get a huge chunk of money at one time, even progressionally or march, things of that nature, it's just hard to do. So anyway, as funding, as we can come up with some funding and a plan, we'll keep that going. And as I showed Richard recently, the, the plans that we had drawn and like I say, I've also got the pricing on the fields already and things. So that project, hopefully we'll get moving again. Another thing is Richie mentioned the, the bypass, I've been working on that for years and years and years. The city of Lewisburg and the highway department have wanted to do that with that than the county commission have pushed it. And currently in our comprehensive plan, we've done an overlay or doing an overlay so that it doesn't build up around Lewisburg, around the bypass like Summersville and other places. And Jeff can attest to that. Jeff's on there. Working on the comprehensive plan. But when we get all that done and the overlay, then I think it's time to go back to the apartment highways and the city of Lewisburg came to one of our meetings recently and talked to us to see what we were doing to keep that spread from going around town. And I think we, maybe we relieved some of their concerns about that by talking about the overlay. So those two things definitely are in the works, but they've been waiting for completion for a while. The comprehensive plan has to be done pretty much this fall, has to be in place by 25, I think. And so that's getting done and our new zoning structure for the board zoning appeals is also being done at the same time. So we've got a lot going on between our projects that we're working on and our, our internal processes and things of that nature. We've got a lot happening there toward now. So I don't think Richie or whoever will have a boring time. They'll have plenty to do, plenty to think about, plenty to learn. It's just, it's, it's richer and Tammy and everyone can, you know, that's there and working every day can think, you know, it's a very busy time. It's not like the commission of old days. I can remember not white one, but one of the other ones years ago that went to Florida every year for about two months and just came kind of called in, but we're, we meet many times a week now. We're in discussions and working on things every day pretty much. So it's a, it's a much busier job than it has been in the past.
Tammy, when are, when, and where are the regular scheduled meetings?
Regular county commission meetings are the second and fourth Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. at the courthouse.
Is that downstairs where it used to be?
No, it's in the annex, in the courthouse, in the, the commission meeting room.
If you haven't been to the courthouse, boy, the, the new part of it is, is really impressive. It is. It's, if you haven't, you know, you should go on, just take a look at it. Do you have any other questions for the commissioners or the commissioner to be? Well, I will let you know that the Tammy and Richie at the current time are unopposed, but I saw in the daily news today that the Democrat Executive Committee will be meeting tomorrow night. And on their agenda is appointing people to the ballot. And that segues well into the next thing on the agenda. We talk, we have traditionally given money to our candidates and Gordon proposed that we give $3,000 to the Morrissey campaign. Morrissey has loaned his campaign better than half a million dollars and he is currently, all his fundraising is toward paying, paying off his debt. And Gordon suggested we give $3,000 to him, $1,000 to Jeff Campbell in District 46 and $1,000 to Ray Canterbury in District 47. And then that we go ahead and provide money on a, on a contingency basis for the candidates for the county commission and the sheriff. The contingency being that if they become opposed, we will go ahead and write them the check for $500 each and we'll still have a few thousand dollars left over that if they need help later on as the election comes near, we, we'd be able to help their campaigns again. So I'll entertain a motion for that expenditure. Gordon is, is unable to be here. He is actually the executor of his mother's estate. His mother passed away in November and he's been having to spend a lot of time in North Carolina working on that. So I'll entertain a motion for the expenditures as I just stated.
Do that. Do that.
I have a question before we.
Wait, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Say.
You spent all this money, how are you going to replenish your fund to pay because you're not having any events?
Do what?
You just, you're talking about giving out $5,000.
We give out all this money, how are we going to make it back up?
Well, our, our goal, as I, as I've said, so for six years while I was chairman, is at the end of the election period, you'd like to have just enough left in your bank account to keep your bank account open. And we will be resuming our annual dinners and, and other fundraising affairs in the spring.
Is that going to be anything at fault?
Six thousand dollars.
Do what?
You're only expending $6,000 and we have $10,000 in the bank.
We'll have about 3,500 left over.
Yeah.
I have a couple of checks in closets and there's actually more than that.
Expenses for the booth at the fair.
What are campaign moments to give to Morrissey? Isn't it 2,800?
It, no, it's 3,000 now.
Inflation.
I was going to say, sorry, I have a question. Okay.
Any other questions? Well, we, we have a motion. Would you like me to restate the motion? Does everybody understand it? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, take care of that. And I apologize that we did not have Steve Hart and Dicky Hart and Punch Pollard on the list of members. We're not having the secretary. We've had some miscommunications along the way, but we're trying to work those out. The, I see Steve is, has wanted to do something for the Republicans in the county and we've settled on a date of September the 5th. Would you like to go ahead and explain that?
Sure, sure. I'm actually from Oklahoma and I think West Virginians are liberal. But, well, it is, you've got to live with it. So I volunteered to do this thing, I see on the schedule it said at the summit, but I, it could be anywhere on that Greenbrier property that was advantageous to people. But I am going to try to do fundraising because that's what I have done all my life. And so I thought I'd do a little bit of an exhibit here tonight because I intend to invite the Punch Pollers and other people from the Greenbrier community to go to wherever we have this thing there. And so I'm going to do it now, if you don't mind. May I?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Get the floor.
I do. Okay, so I'm going to put stuff up for auction at this event. And I don't know how you'll advertise it. Gordon's not here, obviously, so, so like here's an unused Make America Great hat. I would propose to link it to some, you know, I have all sorts of historical stuff. This is a Nixon hat, for those of you who remember Nixon. But I, I would propose to auction off this kinds of stuff at, at this event. And I'm going to propose to do a couple of things now to try to raise money. And this has to be all cash. So if you don't have cash, well, you probably can't have a credit card anyway. Here's a signed Tom Cotton book. He might be the vice president. I think I'd start bidding at like $20. The book is worth $20, but it's signed. So if anybody would like to throw $20 out into the hat for a sign, this will be historical. Well, all right, great punch.
You're going to auction it off?
Well, I am auctioning it off, but you know, somebody else should bid. But this is the kind of stuff I'm going to do at your other event. And we can do it here tonight, I don't care. This is the Queen Elizabeth Joint Meeting of the United States Congress, May 1991. Got the bearer certificate and I'd like permission from Gordon, I guess, because you don't have authority, to, to try to do an auction.
I think we can go ahead and count on it. Now, Gordon also would like to use that as a membership event and try to advertise it as a, as a great event. And after, at the September meeting and afterward, dues will be for 2025. That's according to our bylaws. So any dues collected before the September meeting will be for the current year.
Do you mind if I, I don't want an answer from any of you about any of this, but maybe you could tell, you know, Barbara, Sue, or Doug, or Frank, if he was here, what you would like to see at this event? Because I, Punch and I will try to invite people who are not, you know, Greenbrier residents, but they live at the Greenbrier and try to get them to give money. Why, is that okay?
We, we found that when we do something like this, if we can get our candidates to come, that's a real draw widely to get them to come. So we need to start now, setting the date and maybe the place and see if you can get them to come, including the governor, the president.
Well, he lives there.
He should be there, but we need to start working on getting them there. So we need to, we, we need to be sure we have the date and possibly the place.
What day is that?
Thursday.
I would like recommend mine not have it on Saturday versus if you were having a summit and something like that.
I don't know, they, they picked the date, not me.
That's a, that's a regular meeting day.
Yeah, I know that, but the way this event, it sounds like it's going to be a large, like one of the events that we would have is what we're working toward.
We, we went through that on looking at what would be available times.
Well, also, also a Saturday, I doubt we can reserve the summit. On, on a Thursday, we can reserve the, summit is the place at the top of the hill and it's really beautiful, but on a Thursday, we can reserve it. But on a Saturday, the club is, they, they make money.
We need to be sure Patrick's there.
I'll leave that to you.
Well, that's true. I was thinking of the place over. Back, not back.
Steve, we, we really appreciate the effort and I, I think Gordon is, is fine with an auction and we're, we're, we'll plan to do it as a membership event as well.
And Punch will have his cars up there.
Can we drive his cars?
I can ask him.
Ally, have you ever ridden in one of these cars?
Many of his cars. He's my parade escort.
You go in his car in the parade, they're saying.
Yeah. We actually won first place there.
Is that his trophy?
That is his trophy. That's for the 1963 Chevy Corvette stingray.
Look at the car on top. Man, oh my gosh.
Well, I, I just, to conclude my remarks, I, I'd like anybody with ideas that, that they think will be useful. I'd like to get the locals in. I, I mean Punch and I will try to bring in people who will make contributions, you know, and, but they're not voters.
And we want, we want to bring in the voters who are, are here year round and will become members and contributors in the club.
We have to get our membership up.
Do what?
We have to get membership up.
Yeah. We currently have about 35 members and the year before we were up to around 120, but you have to understand that was the year that we were trying to get lots of people in, in order to elect our slate of, of officers. So it was a, a real membership push at that time. And a lot of those people participated in that and, and it was, that was it for them. So, but we, we appreciate your doing the event, Steve. And I'm sure we'll be coming with a more idea. Richie, I'm, I'm sure that you'll find that you get lots of suggestions and Tammy, I'm sure can testify on that as well.
A lot of suggestions that you can't do anything with because most of the time it's not something that's within your realm of the ability to do.
That, that, that's right. I, I've noticed that a lot of the political ads that were about Morrissey were about as the attorney general, he didn't do this or he didn't do that. And all of those things were things that are not within the purview of the attorney general of West Virginia to have any influence about. So, okay. Candidate for the House of Delegates in the 47th district got here. So Ray, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank the club for the support. I appreciate that. That's, I know that when I was campaigning, a lot of people asked me from time to time, you know, what I thought the most important issue confronting the state is, and I thought I'd, I'd repeat that here. Actually, I, I think it is our debt load. The state of West Virginia has a significant amount of debt, both in bonded debt and unfunded liabilities and various types, various programs. And we have an aging population and if the economy ever turns down, we're really facing a considerable amount of risk. And I know that issue isn't too glamorous, but, and when you start to talk about financial risk, it just kind of goes over people's heads. So I thought I'd take some time here to just to kind of briefly explain what one of these financial risks might be. And this is something that could affect every single one of you individually as well if you own stocks and bonds. But there's a fellow by the name of David Webb, who used to be a hedge fund manager who's been arguing it, has been talking about something that he calls the great taking. But there's a fellow by the name of David Webb, who used to be a hedge fund manager, who's been arguing it, has been talking about something that he calls the great taking. And he basically argues that it works like this. Some years ago, many years ago, because stock trading became a very fast-paced enterprise, where stocks could be traded very rapidly, lightning speed, it got to be rather impractical for your brokers, at least theoretically, became impractical for your broker to act, or for you to actually own your stocks. What happens is your stocks are actually owned by your broker and they're deposited in this exchange. And you are a subordinated creditor to your broker. So if for some reason, let's say there's a financial crisis and a financial meltdown, and your broker goes bankrupt, your stock assets can be taken from you because you don't actually own them. You're, you have a beneficial interest and that's a subordinated interest. He's cited some examples of this. He said that during the 2008 financial crisis, there was a small broker in Florida that went bankrupt. And that instead of sending the client securities to another broker, as had traditionally been the case, they were swept up by the bankruptcy receiver. So the clients in that case lost their money. He said it's not, that isolated the small brokers. He said the bankruptcy of Lehman Brothers set the case law precedent for secured creditors to take client assets in the case of insolvent. So if you own stocks and bonds through a broker and there's a financial crisis, the market's turned down and your broker is financially insolvent, you stand to lose those assets. And the only safeguard you have against it is to actually have physical possession of the stock security certificate. Now, the reason this, I, I bring this up is because the state of West Virginia, of course, is a very large investor. Now, we are, would be, I guess we would be an institutional investor. Some of the secured creditors would include JP Morgan, BlackRock, Goldman Sachs, et cetera. We would invest through those. But I don't necessarily consider it guarantee, a guaranteed fact that they would, that they would go the extra mile to make sure that we were safe as an institutional investor in the event of a meltdown like that, because some of those institutions have been known to trade for their own accounts against their client interests. So I think that, given, given the uncertainty in the financial markets and the national economy now, I, I think it's going to be important to have people in the legislature working with the treasurer and the governor to start doing an overall assessment, not only of the total level of our debt, but the risks associated with those debts. Because if in fact we did have an economic meltdown and, you know, we had assets that were swept away, that would jeopardize pensioners in the state of West Virginia, and it would also jeopardize taxpayers because we could very well, we would still be stuck with the obligation of repaying those pensions. And we have well over four and a half, five billion dollars, something like that, sitting in those pension funds now. And that's money that we can use to pay those debts in the future. And if that money got wiped out, we would be in serious trouble. So I, I just want to throw that out there because it may not sound like the most glamorous issue in the world, but I think that in fact, given the financial uncertainty in the markets today, this is the single most pressing issue that the state of West Virginia has to deal with. Again, I appreciate your support. It's going to be an interesting race, I guess. I, I don't know much about my opponent. They say she's on the Pride Committee, so I guess that says a lot. And anyway, I'd certainly appreciate your ongoing support through November and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Faye?
Yes.
I thought I heard, and I'm not big on numbers or money or anything like that. But I thought I heard on the radio the other day the governor talking about how there was a huge surplus.
Well, sur-
Way bigger than ever.
You have to understand, a lot, a lot of these surpluses, I know we, we were having surpluses during COVID because the federal government was pumping money through every state in the country. I don't know, there are generally, there are revenue increases now, but we have debt. And debt and, debt and revenue are two different things. I mean, we may, we may be having revenue, we may be having good, strong revenue numbers now, but we still have a debt load. It's gonna, we're, we're, one of, one of the most indebted states in the country on a per capita basis. I mean, it's, it's hard to imagine.
Are we, are we paying our debt in like the federal government?
Yeah, I mean, it, I-
So far.
So far. The, the big one that I'm most familiar with is, is in the pension system, because when I was there, there before, I was pension's chair for years and we have something like on paper at that time, four and a half billion dollars in assets in that account, but we have on paper, nine billion dollars in obligations. So those obligations, according to the lawyers, you know, you really will have to pay these. These are contractual obligations. These people work for this. This is the benefit they earned. So this is actually a debt of the state and the, the Financial Accounting Standards Board requires us to include those obligations on our balance sheet. So it's a real debt. And the fact is, those, those numbers, that four and a half billion dollar unfunded liability, that's really not accurate. It's, it's higher than that. Because we use a discount rate now, we used seven and a half when I was there as a discount rate. They use seven and a quarter now, but the underwriters, when they readjust it, they, they reprogram it at five and a half percent. So when you lower the discount rate, that actually increases the numbers. And really, because you're dealing with pensions, you should be, you should be investing in fairly safe assets because you have a guaranteed obligation. So in fact, it's usually considered that you should only be, you should only have a, a spread of like one or two points above risk-free returns when you're doing your discount. In that case, you could, well, now it wouldn't be so bad. But back when interest rates were really low, that would have created a nominal unfunded liability of over 20 billion. I mean, the, the numbers are staggering. If you, the, the important thing is, is the way it's going to affect us in the cash flow. We have to set money aside every cycle to cover those old debts. And we really, and, and that includes, you know, repaying existing pensioners. And if something happens to those funds going forward, it could, it could really cause a problem because then you're collecting taxes from people and you're using that money to basically pay for services that were basically provided decades back. And that money's not available for the present and you can't cut taxes. So it kind of creates a problem. So that's the debt that I'm most familiar with. We also have unfunded liabilities in an old workers' comp fund and that's being reduced. There was a lot of fraud in that, I believe. They worked that, some of that out. There was unfunded liabilities in something called OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, for some teachers and other public employees that traded their health, they, they would, what happened back in the seventies and eighties, the legislature decided it was a good idea to let public employees accumulate sick leave and then trade it for healthcare benefits later. Well, they didn't count on the very fast rate of healthcare inflation and it turned out to be a very bad deal for the state of West Virginia. And we ended up at the time with a $5 billion unfunded liability, again, and other, but we will work that one through. And we did make some changes to the pension plan when I was there the last time, where we went from a defined benefit system to a defined contribution system for new hires. So again, in the long run, we can work through some of this stuff. But in the short term, you know, if you have a downturn in the market, well, this happened in 2008, by the way, when I was there as well. We had a downturn in the market and that, because we're, we have a formula that we have to follow and it, it created an instant increase in the amount of money we had to set aside in the budget to cover the pension. So so having those debts reduced is very, very important from a cash flow management perspective. And, and especially in an environment like the one we're in now, where, you know, I'm not convinced, you know, I think the stock market, they say it all rests on Nvidia. I mean, it's one stock that's carrying everything. And so anyway, too much, there's too much risk out there at the present. And I think it's something that, you know, from the legislative standpoint and the executive side, we really need to look into that and take, take control of it.
Hey, I would, I would like to answer your question about the surplus. The governor has a very creative accountant named Brian Abraham. I've got an interest administration. And what they have done, and Phil Kavler, who's a State House reporter for the Gazette, has pointed out several times over the last few years, and some woman caught on to it and had a nice article in the Gazette this week about it. What they do is they take last year's revenues, okay? They subtract 25%. And they predict that's what they're going to be the revenues for the next year. So if you get anything more than that 75% of last year, it's excess revenues. And Ben Fields, who's one of the editors of the Gazette, was talking about it this week in the Gazette. But is, is this just a, a, the reduction in income tax, is that a real thing or is that just a folk buying gimmick? So you need, you need to understand that there is no more money. It's just creative accounting they call the surplus. You have anything you'd like to throw in for the good of the club?
May I, may I ask a question? This is my old field of practice. When you switched from defined benefit to defined contribution, what was the cutoffs for service? I mean?
Trying to think, you mean like for, well-
Well, you, people who had been in the defined benefit program got to continue on?
They got to continue on. It was just right there. It was that, it was the people that were already in defined benefit, even if they'd been there for six months, they were still.
So that's like really long-term.
Well, it, it is, yeah. And, but that was 2008. So that's been a while now.
We're fine to help that a little bit because when I retired in 2016, I was in the TDC, defined contribution. We were given an option to buy back into TRS. And at the point of that was for me to be with my service to go back into TRS. With the money that I had, we had $8 million in excess in the TDC while the TRS was basically even or under. They wanted me to pay them $10,000 to take from my TDC to go back into the TRS program. Most of us who were in the TDC chose not to go back. If you were a career long-term, you would go back. Because it, you know, then you're guaranteed all through your life. If you're TDC, you can get the amount of money you want per month sent to you, and then taxes are taken. So basically, TDC, if I want to take all my retirement on one check, then the government would take 20% of it. And the state of West Virginia would pay me all my money because it is not handled by the state of West Virginia. It is handled by a brokerage firm that takes care of that. But TDC is not, not available now in the school, in the retirement system because of that, to, to fund the TRS programs.
Plus their benefits have changed for teachers.
Teacher benefit changed so dramatic, didn't they just?
It's unreal.
But contrary, now, when I left, I had 170, 180 days of sick time. I could not convert them over to retirement. I could use them only for hospitalization or insurance, but they also charged me three days. Whereas the R S program, they had two days to get the same benefit, plus what they charged in excess of what my three days was to offset the cost of the insurance. So it wasn't a free program at all as TRS. And that, that's what created some of the unbalance that was in there and the reason they done away with TDC program.
And now the new teachers cannot accumulate their days.
That's right, they.
That benefit is gone. And that was one of the benefits, that's why people went into it, so they could accumulate their days. Now they can't. You lose them at the end of the year.
One other thing you need to remember when you're looking at the big surplus money is we, we currently need $300 billion of infrastructure in our jails and prisons in West Virginia. And none of that surplus is being directed toward that. And they're, they're currently facing several lawsuits by prisoners lack of running water in their, in their cells, lack of showers. So you gotta, you, you, you need to read the Charleston Gazette. It's better to know your enemies that way. So you can find out a lot about what's going on with it, even, even though you don't like what they say. We, we have a birthday boy in our, in our group this week. So Ron Kirk has a birthday on Sunday. So Richie's going to lead us in singing Happy Birthday to Ron.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Ron. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
Ron, Ron's going to lead us with our usual dismissal of us. God bless America.
Well, that's what I'm saying. All together now.
God bless America. Land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans, white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.